Thank you, the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, human physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if we'll agenda, um, I can entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, Mr. President, I would approve the agenda as presented with the following amendments. Item, adding item E five C, consider approval of list number four for student exemptions to participate in the level of learning.
Push my mark.
Second.
Push my mark, second by Lauren. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. Delegation public comments? Uh, any correspondence?
Um, right now, due to a conflict of interest, I need to recuse myself and present an agenda.
Mark.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Certainly.
Okay, will I have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is second to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Not hearing any, uh, I guess, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side. Motion passes. He's so kind, yes to.
Shouldn't we just leave them out there?
We have a back to you, sir.
Okay, more roles update, one point one, post-secondary success report.
So. Okay, uh, Mr. Sullivan and I are going to, uh, present some data, um, for our district, uh, post-secondary success programs. Um, I will go through, uh, we'll have a few slides, uh, that include some of the statewide members, district members, and then Garden City High School members. Um, then we'll kind of talk about some of the, uh, factors that we are hoping, uh, will move the needle for us, um, at Garden City High School, and then Mr. Sullivan can, uh, share some of the data for, uh, the Garden City Achieve. Do you see it?
Yeah.
Garden City Achieve, okay, yeah, yeah. Right. Um, first slide, um, is just kind of, uh, some of the statewide data. I know that many of you on the board are already familiar with the way this kind of works. Um, but just a reminder, the data live for like two years, the state can extract how these graduates do, uh, two years after they graduate from us. Um, and so the most recent data we have is from the graduating class of twenty nineteen, which is the last, uh, non-COVID class. The grad rate, uh, is pretty straightforward. Um, it is the number of grads, uh, the number of four-year graduates divided by the number that is starting in that cohort group. Um, the success rate, uh, that we'll talk about, um, is, uh, defined as, uh, it's when a student meets one of the, the following four criteria. One of those is achieving a industry-recognized certification while in high school. Um, another one is earning a post-secondary certificate, so after they leave us, earning a certificate. Um, another one is earning a post-secondary degree in that first two years. And then the other, um, way that they can demonstrate that success is enrolling in a post-secondary, uh, program in both the first and second year following graduation. That is success rate. And to note here, um, it does not count military, military is not included in these numbers. Uh, and then the last, uh, term we'll go through is the effective rate, uh, that is the graduation rate divided by, I'm sorry, uh, multiplied by the success rate. Stakehold of the league in the next three years is to be up to a sixty percent effective rate. As you can see there, um, the state's five-year effective average, uh, so averaging the effective rates of the last four year, or five years, is right about forty percent, or forty-eight percent. Uh, some of our district data here, this averages in, um, Garden City High School and Garden City Achieve. As you can see down here in the, uh, lower corner here, the ninety-five percent confidence interval, basically that's where the state predicts that we as a district would achieve based on our, or accounting for our risk factors as a district. So, um, the state predicts that we would be somewhere between thirty-three and thirty-eight percent on our effective news rate, and our most recent data, uh, shows us at thirty-nine percent as a district. So, um, just a step above basically, uh, where they predict us to be, again, given those risk factors. Um, we know that, you know, it is a team effort between Garden City Achieve and Garden City High School, they're all our students. Um, I, I can speak for Garden City High School that we are really excited, you know, with Mr. Sullivan taking over and, and some of the new things happening over there, and our students are, uh, taking some auto classes on their campus, and I think that's going real, really well so far, and I know he's going to talk a little bit about the auto program. Uh, so we really hope, you know, to be able to move the needle with the help of Garden City Achieve here in the next several years.
Could I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
I apologize for doing that. But it just was notable to me, the range of thirty-three to thirty-eight point six that the state estimates, that's a pretty wide estimate.
Right.
And, and we're even above that. So, I mean, is, why is, why do they give such a big range? Is it just because they're still trying to figure out the variables, or?
Yeah, you know, I don't, um, not sure. Uh, I know it's, you know, I think it's a statistical thing, it could, ninety-five percent confidence interval can fall anywhere in between, or in that range. Uh, Dr. Farman, I don't know if you know much more about that success.
It's probably a side note thing, but I was just questioning, because we, it, it's great to be outside of that, uh, on the high side, and I just was wondering why it was such a big range, and so it's just a statistical thing.
Yeah, uh, and we're, you know, we're, we're proud, you know, that we're on the outside of that range too. Um, the thing, you know, one of our, uh, challenge here is that it stays pretty, pretty even there, and that's why I hope, um, that some of the new things that we're doing, uh, in partnership with, uh, the Garden City Achieve, and then also, you know, the councilors are going to talk here a little bit after I talk, uh, about some of the awesome things that are, that are happening there, um, that we've implemented in the last two years, uh, that hopefully we see the needle start to move a little bit on that effective rate. You bet. Okay, some of the, uh, Garden City High School data, I feel like on this slide, it's a little bit in your pocket, I think you may be receiving these slides. Um, I had the one slide that was twenty eighteen, it was the last, uh, you know, one we have there. So this is the updated one. Uh, the numbers from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen for Garden City High School are, um, just about identical. We are at forty percent, forty-eight percent effective rate, which is right about where the state is performing. Again, like I mentioned, this data is for our last non-COVID class. We're excited, we've learned, uh, that our graduation rate for last year's class, uh, bumped up another ten percent, so we're at, uh, ninety point four percent now at Garden City High School, it was ninety point three for the class of twenty twenty. So, we feel like that's going in the right direction. We know that, um, a byproduct of COVID, we've already seen the numbers, um, we have less students enrolling in four-year institutions, uh, community college and technical school members, two-year institutions, that's pretty steady, uh, according to the clearinghouse data, uh, but we know that, um, we have less students the last two years enrolling in four-year institutions. So we're going to need to bump up the graduation rate, keep that effective rate, um, on upward trend. Um, so in keeping with our goal of, you know, producing, uh, contributing citizens, um, you're going to hear a little bit more, not so much tonight, but you're going to be, start bringing to a market value assets. Um, we are researching this, um, we're kind of in year zero at Garden City High School as far as implementing this goes. Um, but basically it is tracking, we're doing all these great things, but it's really hard for us to track. We're going to start tracking how many of our graduates graduate with, um, at least some kind of work-based experience, uh, some kind of a, uh, industry-recognized certification, um, taking dual credit classes, uh, civic engagement, all those things, we're going to start tracking that, we're going to try to ensure that hundred percent of our students graduate with one of those market value assets that makes them more employable, uh, employable after they leave us. Um, so you're going to hear a lot more about that, I'm only going to harp on that, we could talk for an hour about that. Uh, but I want, I do want to highlight before I switch slides, um, the certification opportunities we have, um, that we've had students, you know, uh, recently take advantage of, um, I'm just going to list them, we have OSHA ten, uh, certifications, SERV safe, post start, um, those two are with our Q and A program. Uh, we have students earning their certified nurse aid, their certified medication aid, um, and AWS welding certification, Mouses, which is Microsoft, uh, uh, Microsoft Office User Specialist certifications, CPR first aid, AED, uh, that's just kind of a sampling of, uh, the certifications that our students earn on a regular basis at Garden City High School.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
In those certifications, let's say I got a CPR certification, um, would I, if I only achieved that, would I be considered as successful with post-secondary, whether counted as someone who achieved post-secondary?
I believe so.
So, you see where I'm headed with this.
The varying degrees of.
CPR certification is really a skill that's going to make you employable. So when we look at what percentage of our kids are achieving post-secondary success rates, if I'm counted as achieving that success because I have a CPR certification, I'm not really sure I should have been included in those.
Dr. Hannigan, we need to check that.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Those certifications have to be state-approved, so it's not just any certification, this metric is defined by the Kansas State Board of Education. And I don't know the answer to that for sure, but I would, I would speculate that a CPR certification would probably not count towards this. Even, I think even the OSHA ten, I don't even think that one counts, and we were concerned about that because that was one that is kind of a precursor to a lot of trade-type programs, and we were questioning why that one wouldn't count, so I'd be surprised if CPR would count, but we'll do a little dig in.
Uh, yeah, my point though is that we're making the effort to delineate between certificates that are precursors to successful post-secondary achievement versus certificates being counted as actual achievement. And I see, to me, a lot of those certificates, they are a great start, but I don't necessarily think they should be included in.
Yeah, they might not, we'll, yeah, we'll do some research. Yeah, I was just.
And, and I'm only trying to clarify for myself.
Totally understand.
Follow. I'm not trying to change how they count things.
Yeah.
I'm actually just trying to get a realistic idea based on how you're actually counting people, or what.
Got you.
Yep, I understand.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, so we're just going to kind of go through and highlight some of these, uh, contributing factors. Uh, first of all, staff and students, I, you know, I, I think that Garden City High School and Garden City Achieve, we kind of, we kind of wrap these students in, um, support experiences and, you know, we hope, uh, we hope that when they leave, you know, they fly, but it starts with the, I, I really do believe that we have a student body that fly and learn and wants to be successful. Um, a lot of them require a lot more support than others, um, but, uh, it, it does, uh, start with the students and then our staff also pay for these, our risk factors and our challenges and, um, roll up their sleeves every day, and again, you're going to hear from the councilors here pretty soon, and they, they for sure play a part of the role. Uh, but as we, as we recover from, you know, a couple of disruptive years, um, at Garden City High School, we've really changed the focus this year, and we're trying to raise, uh, a level of other expectations for students. Uh, that's both, um, behavioral, uh, academic, um, you're also hearing about the new teacher project, uh, trains that we're, uh, we're having in Garden City, and, um, part of the whole idea there is to provide on-grade level, um, uh, curriculum and, uh, providing the justice and supports for those that need it. Uh, but raising that, that level of expectation, uh, we've done behaviorally, we have a few points of emphasis this year at Garden City High School that we've been really consistent with, and we're hoping again that that makes our students more employable and more productive when they leave us. Uh, student support, uh, we have added upper-level offerings, uh, we continue to work with Garden City Community College, uh, to expand those opportunities, and Dr. Hannigan was involved a few years ago with his, uh, daughters, uh, we have, uh, dual credit help and dual credit college statistics now offered on, on our campus. Uh, before that, you know, college offering was the highest, uh, level that we offered. Uh, we also have, uh, lots of tutoring support, uh, we have after-school tutoring available, uh, most days of the week, we have added Saturday mornings this year, uh, from seven to ten o'clock in the morning. Um, we also have, as a district, purchase, uh, access to the tutoring app, where they go online and, and get support from a live tutor, uh, over the internet. We also have great veteran special education staff at Garden City High School, E S L staff, that provide lots and lots of services for our kids. You guys have seen, I'm sure, uh, Garden City High School, twenty-two different languages spoken in homes this year, um, students more than thirty-two different countries, and so it doesn't just happen, whether those students go on to be successful when they leave us. Uh, social emotional support, uh, we had a school-wide focus on self-regulation last year, and we'll have that, uh, focused again this year. We've also extended our work-based learning opportunities, and again, that's going to fit in there with the market value assets. Uh, Ms. Hamlin and the, the rest of the council staff worked really hard to expand those opportunities for students this year. If my count is correct, I believe we have fifty-seven students now, uh, working or enrolled in a work-based learning class, um, and that's a big expansion, you know, just last year, uh, it was a handful, and so we're really excited about that, and again, how that experience is going to, uh, translate into post-secondary success, uh, when they leave us. Uh, we have shadowing opportunities in several of our classes, you guys are aware, um, familiar with Buffalo Coffee Shop, uh, that's been expanded in our special education department this year to a, uh, coffee center, uh, that's off us to a coffee center, um, so those are all good work-based experiences for our kids. Uh, leadership opportunities, uh, we have several advisory councils, we have Mr. Nordby's, uh, principal's advisory, we have a freshman advisory now, um, athletics advisory, uh, we also have, uh, the peer leadership class, again, with the Buffalo Coffee Shop, where those students are going in and, and serving as, uh, leaders in the coffee shop setting. Uh, of course, we have SUCO, saw two full sections of SUCO, they just played homecoming activities and went to the dance, and that was a lot of fun. Uh, our jobs for American Graduates Program, I know Mr. Sullivan talked a little bit about that, uh, but that's another, uh, another opportunity for our students to lead. College visits, uh, they started, we had students going and visiting colleges last week, um, both, uh, through the career center and through our audit class. Uh, college planning conferences, college application month, I believe is this month, uh, Play Kansas, uh, then again with our individual plan to study, and you guys have heard about that over the last several years, we continue to improve this process, which is a challenge, uh, for, for school or society, but we could get about the progress we made and where we're headed, uh, with that, and that work is going to begin this month really heavily, you know, the one, or over the next five months. Um, just saw a calendar of the activities last week, and it looks pretty great. All right, one more slide, sorry, wait here, here. Uh, another, um, program that you guys may be familiar with, uh, communities and schools, we have a full-time dedicated, uh, uh, communities and schools advisor that, uh, serves as a link between the commu-, community resources in Garden City and our, uh, students at the high school that adhere. These are both short-term services that they need right now, and also long-term support. Uh, our JAG class, again, uh, thirty-five to forty-five students each year, um, they, um, work on employability competencies, uh, employer connections, post-secondary placement services, and they also have a component where they follow up with the students, uh, up to twelve months after they leave us. Uh, we're also really proud and excited about our, um, ongoing, uh, relationship with Garden City Community College. For me, it's exposing those kids, you know, uh, when we built the high school, we tried to get all of our, our classes to be offered on Garden City High School campus, which is great because then, you know, we have an equity, uh, solution there, and, and also we don't have an issue with students traveling and safety. Um, but we do, we do still have students traveling to Garden City Community College for classes, and I think that's important, uh, because there's a little bit of difference. Being familiar with the campus and the, and the staff on our campus, I think, uh, helps to ensure that they're going to enroll in the second year after they leave us. Um, we're adding more and more every year, this year, uh, we had two hundred and forty students enrolled in at least one class, uh, talked about in the fall, our current semester, two hundred and forty students enrolled in four hundred and sixty-eight classes, uh, twenty-four different classes right now that our students are enrolled in for dual credit, uh, through Garden City Community College, and also I learned last week that there are, um, some discussions about adding a college skills and development class for dual credit, uh, which again, I think is going to help, um, move the needle as far as our effective rate goes. Uh, roughly two-thirds of our students, uh, of our students who leave here, uh, that are college-bound, enroll at Garden City Community College, and so we're really excited about that partnership and continue to improve. Um, we also have, I'm going out of word here, sorry, uh, mentoring activities, we have more and more students serving as mentors for elementary-age, uh, students, uh, through Big Brothers, Big Sisters, um, we have roughly thirty students traveling to elementary schools, uh, this semester, uh, mentoring other people, and so again, I think that, uh, that is very, very valuable, um, not only is it show, uh, leadership, but it also, uh, provides a networking opportunity, I know a lot of times, one of those students does really well, and someone at that elementary school starts talking to them, not becoming a teacher, so, um, that's really great. And then the last thing, I know you guys are very familiar with AD, uh, but just again, uh, it really has helped us, um, that program targets first-generation college students, um, we use the strategies, uh, those active strategies school-wide, and, uh, again, I already talked, uh, a little bit about, um, colleges, those, those students go and actually, uh, step foot as first-generation college students on those campuses and, and get a chance to interact, uh, with the staff and students, so. That's all you can.
All right. Is that all?
Thank you, Brad.
Yep.
Yeah, my name's Lucas Sullivan, um, principal at Garden, now Garden City Achieve, um, talk a little bit about our data and our post-secondary success. Um, here just last week, this is automotive class, um, and we had a speaker from the community coming in and talking to our kids about those opportunities, uh, job opportunities in the, in the, um, community. Um, obviously, um, our numbers are not where I want them to be, um, and so just, I talk to so many of our kids at our building, and we have a number of at-risk students, um, a lot of times there may be students that, that fall behind at the high school, and they're able to catch up, um, at, in our building because of the ingenuity, how our quarter schedule, um, our ninety-minute blocks. So, I talk to so many of our kids and they all say, um, you know, I'm like, what's your goal? Well, I want, I want to get my diploma and get done. Well, that's great, but then what? So, just having that conversation with those kids, okay, what's our plan after we get that diploma? And so many of our kids don't have that plan, so just having those discussions. But, um, I do know our graduation rate has gone up, I know in twenty twenty it was sixty-seven percent, so just seeing a little bit of increase on that data, on all of it, is a good thing, but I know that we need to be better with our effective, our five-year effective a-average and our five-year, um, success average.
Chief Director Staskis.
Yep.
Nineteen year that we had been admin changed over there?
It would have been.
Or eighteen?
Eighteen, I believe. Yeah. Eighteen, eighteen. Yeah. Thank you, sir. So, yeah, I, and under Mr. Public's graduation rate, it's fairly, um, improved, and I would hope that the, um, success rate will follow that as well. So, some of the things that we have going on is just the expansion of the automotive program. So the automotive program through Garden City Community College, um, we have twelve Achieve students currently enrolled in the dual credit program, so I feel like getting more kids in that dual credit, they're already on their way to associate's degree, so they're already on their way to a more successful, um, having an effective success house after they graduate. And, um, I like having it first hour because then they're there, they're on time, um, they're, they're, they're going to be there for the rest of the day to do the math in their ELA. Um, we are trying to expand this, mostly this is targeted juniors and seniors, um, but working with the college to get a parts program that would maybe target more freshmen and sophomore age, um, kids, so just giving them more hands-on, um, real-world, um, experience. Um, we also, so our shop also provides classes, um, classes for our Garden City High School kids, um, we have in the automotive, and then also Holcombe, Lakin, and Garden City Community College students, so we have a lot of different kids, um, the, the shop has been a work in progress, but it is really, it's really awesome to see, um, our kids and then kids from throughout the, um, area, um, be successful with that. And then also, our Achieve kids, I, I have a conversation in the morning all the time about, um, cosmetology, our, our kids that are in the cosmetology program after college really love it, um, the construction program, we have some kids in that, and then the welding programs is also, as well, so the more dual credit programs we get our kids involved in, again, um, they're going to have, like Mr. Me said, a better chance when they graduate is go that second year and continue working towards that associate's degree.
No, I add all those classes are also paid for by the student families, it's all free to the students.
Um, so JAG is a, a big thing in our building, we have a full-time JAG instructor, um, our junior and seniors, it's an elective that most of our juniors and seniors will take at some point, so, um, having a full-time JAG, uh, person and then, and teaching some of these skills, uh, career, career development, um, basic communication, so many of our kids don't even know how to have like a conversation, shake somebody's hand, so just having those, um, soft skills in place and working on those things, getting them out in the community, um, I, I see JAG being in a great elective for us, and right now, on a, we have over one-fifth of our students are in the JAG elective, so a good number of our kids are a part of that. Our JAG teacher also has a mentoring class, so it's another time that the students can come in, they can work, um, work, um, talk about grades, things like that, so. things like that, so having a full-time JAG instructor is huge for us. Monthly career connections, this is just last week, Empirical Foods was in, talking to our soon-to-be graduates. It's just a, and what we do is our seniors that are close to being seniors, they come in if they're interested in the, in whatever the topic is, and we have a lunch board, so they get to spend an hour with that, learning a little bit about what skills they need for the jobs that that business has. But it just gives our, our kids also a time to connect and start doing that networking piece, so I think is huge. We had Empirical Foods last week, cosmetology, we're going to have a person from the, a salon come in for cosmetology. HVAC plumbing, we plan on having automotive, we have a former graduate that's now, I believe, at Lewis Motors that's going to come in. And if we can get some of our former graduates especially, that were at the alternative now Achieve, if we can get some of those kids that can tell their success stories, I think we can grab other kids and say, okay, they did it, why can't I? Welding diesel, culinary ag, rancin' trucking, these are all things that our kids are interested in and we're going to try to get business leaders from those areas. Also, one thing that we're working, Ms. Jockman, the counselor, she does a great job, we're working on the job shadow day, so every kid in the building, we're going to pair up and have some sort of job shadow. So, everyone in the building is going to get out in the community. We're still working out the details, but that's something new that we'd really like to implement this, this year, and that's for our freshmen to seniors, and that's just giving them some more, some more being out in the community and learning what kind of jobs, what kind of skills they need to be successful. And then, our, Mrs. Jockman, our counselor, does a great job with graduation conferences, so, and this is part of just having that conversation. What's next? Okay, great, we're going to graduate, we've got our diploma, what's the plan after that? These are student-led conferences with their individual plans of study, discuss graduation and then what, what can we do after graduation? Okay, what's the plan? Help with FAFSA, I know that Ms. Jockman has a lot of meetings with the kids about FAFSA, follow-up information with career assistance and career opportunities, and then making those post-secondary goals, okay? So, what's the plan? I know last week, we also had somebody from Sutter County Community College in, just bringing in different colleges, getting students, hey, what is out there, what are, what are the opportunities, what can I be of help for? Kansas Gear Up is another program that is housed in our building. Amanda Kennedy is our coordinator, she's a Region Four coordinator, it's housed in at GCHV. She works with eighteen soon-to-be grad, graduates, graduates in our building, whether it's the TEP, the virtual, and the Chief High School. She's also working, I'm also the principal of the Juvenile Detention Center. She's also working with some students at the Juvenile Detention Center to get them either hooked up into some college classes or helping them get to their graduation. Other things that she helps with is ACT prep, FAFSA assistance, I know she's been instrumental in helping one of our juvenile detention kiddos with FAFSA, college exploration and application, getting scholarship opportunities out there, and then job skills and life skills. And that's all I have, if there's any questions for me or Ryan in regards to presentation?
Do I have a question?
Yes.
I just wanted to know, for individual plans of study, do they, is that GCHV also do, is it Zello and that? I can't remember which program it is.
Yes, 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 they do Zello during the mentoring as part of the IPS, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, there's a couple of questions I have, and I noticed that you got the monthly career connections. For the seniors of the Achieve program today, do you guys have like a career fair or a job fair? The local companies that come in and the students can bounce around from table to table?
I know in the past that they attended Garden City High Schools whenever they had theirs or their college days. We're planning something probably in the spring to have our own, to maybe hit, we're wanting to survey our kids and see what their interests are, because our clientele of kids may, their interests may be a little bit different. So, yes, that's something that we're planning, we, I know we worked and had one at Horace Good in the past, so something similar to that, where we bring in different people from the community, I think would be, yeah, something that we're looking at doing.
Okay, and the second, and I don't know if it's just the slides, the way the slides are put together, but it almost seems like the Achieve school is kind of heavy-handed towards a trade school or going to the college and doing welding or cosmetology. I didn't see, except for the last slide, of going to college. So, it almost seems heavy-handed, like we're going to put you in the workforce at this school's, we're building you for the workforce and not for college. So, hopefully, I mean, you can, you can understand from the slides that I'm getting.
Sure, no.
That's kind of the feeling that I'm getting, but hopefully there's a balance between the college and the workforce.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I think too many times, like, I mean, I know it's changed, but when I was in high school, you're going to a four-year college. That's what you're doing, that's what everybody in our graduating class, whatever. I think you've got to find that right fit, and you're right, a balancing, okay, what is best for this student to be successful? Because I hate to send somebody to a four-year institution and they're not, I mean, they're not ready for that as well. But, yeah, it's definitely a balancing act to try to have, have both things.
And I get that, and I appreciate that, I just want to make sure that they understand that it's not just a school for workforce.
Sure, sure.
Employees, I just felt from the heavy-handed slides that it was kind of leaning towards that, and I, I just didn't want that to be misrepresented of what you're trying to accomplish over there at the Achieve Center, so, thank you, I appreciate it. Anything else?
Governor. First, just to kind of maybe help you out too on leaving your mind.
Help you out.
I've got a job shadow coming and helping me out next semester. If she passes her, I'm making her do an interview too, but, so, because she's interested in being a lawyer, so. And then, one question I have, and this fell in more for Dr. Carlin. I seem to recall when Renee did the post-secondary success, that she, at one point, tried to at least say, this is what our numbers would look like if, like we included military or something like that. Have we looked back into any of that at all in some of the work that she was doing? So, we know, I guess, the real success rate, because, I mean, somebody can go to work and that's not included in the success rate here, which I think should be.
Yeah, and I think what we found is it's just pretty time-intensive to track what the state can't get their arms around. Like, for example, the issue with the military, and that's, that's not a KSDE issue, that's with the military, they, they won't release that information. So, last year, if you remember, we had to delay graduation. We had graduation in July in twenty-twenty. And we actually had two kids that got to walk the graduation, who had we had it in May when we normally have it, wouldn't have got to walk. Because the day after their class is finished, they left for boot camp. And they were back from boot camp and, and on a short little break, and so they got to participate in the graduation ceremony. But we don't, we don't get data back from the military on who completes, who doesn't, you know, or even necessarily who's going. So, we, we did try, but I think we kind of came to the conclusion that there's, we're going to spend an awful lot of time and effort trying to track some stuff, but we're probably not ultimately going to be able to have consistent and consistently accurate information. So, the state has pretty much said on this that, well, they, they agree those are successful people. You know, somebody who, for example, in our family, who maybe doesn't go on to college, but joins the family business and the family business is very successful, we certainly would, would define them as being successful whether they achieved a college degree or not prior to that. The state has pretty much just said, we know there's a group of, of people represented, students represented in that, that we're not going to be able to account for, and as long as we do it across the state, that gives us, you know, kind of a reasonable way to look at this, so.
Thank you.
So, my memory serves me right, we expanded the Avid program recently down to grade seven. Can you talk about how the expansion down to grade seven feeds into the Avid program in the high school? And is, is the Avid structure a predetermined structure? Or are we, are we able to take their guidance? I don't know exactly how, how those are structured and how those are set up by grades.
I can't speak, you know, too much about the way they're implementing it at the middle school. But for me, in my position, the common language that we use and talking about those, those high-yield strategies in the classroom, I think is where we get most of our bang for the buck. For example, we were talking, I think it was our first PLC of the year in the Health Academy PLC. Our PLC leader asked the whole group of teachers to go around and share a strategy that they're using. I don't remember what the prompt was, but one of the classroom strategies that they're using, I was keeping track in my head, the WICOR strategies, writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading, to see if all five of those were represented as we went around the room with our twenty teachers. And every single one, we get every single one, and I think that every single person that shared something, shared the WICOR strategy and they didn't even really realize they were. So, I think that where we're at right now in implementation, district-wide, has had a positive impact. And I think that common language from the time they start now down in seventh grade and they get to us in ninth grade is going to start to pay dividends, but I don't know admittedly, you know, a whole lot about how it's being implemented at the, I mean.
Yeah, so, I mean, so being from Horace Good, in my, and previously, so I think it's twofold. I think we're now identifying kids that fit into the Avid elective classes, and then those kids are now filing up to the high school into those classes. And then also, throughout all the common language, the WICOR, WICOR strategies, I mean, that's something I always looked for if I was going in for a walkthrough, or we see the writing, the reading, the collaboration. So, I do think now that these seventh graders, the seventh graders that have been in Avid, now they're probably freshmen now or going to be sophomores, I do think that you're going to start seeing some of that. Now, I don't have concrete data for what exactly, what it's being represented, but I do think those two things are helping for me. And then also, just, I think at the middle school level, having that conversation, where you started hanging up the different colleges and the different tech schools and the different community college, just seeing all the different programs and colleges, starting that conversation at seventh grade and eighth grade with the IPS, I think that gets them at least thinking about, okay, what, what is, what is my goal after high school, what do I want to start to go into?
Yeah, so, thank you, I, I'm really interested in this expansion of the Avid program. It seems there's a lot of excitement from those of you that are in the field about this extension down in earlier grades of Avid. What's been a puzzle to me is that my understanding of the Avid program was, was that it was directed towards first-generation college kids.
Yeah, the, the Avid elective.
Yeah, the Avid elective. So, the Avid program is school-wide, there's so much Avid strategies in those, the Avid program.
Like the WICOR, WICOR that we're talking about, those strategies are implemented school-wide. But then, yes, you're right, the electives are going to target the first-generation kids more.
Put some more intensive, you know, strategies out there, you know, really get into the note-taking, the tutoring strategies in the college visits. You know, those things are all, those things are available to the whole student body with the school-wide approach and through the career center, you know, some of the college stuff. And we're pretty careful now, the way we, Avid says, you know, a college-going atmosphere is what you want to foster. That gets a little tricky, you know, we, we talk about post-secondary training, you know. Again, like you mentioned, it doesn't have to be a four-year program for all students. There are really good technical programs, a lot of, even at the, at the university level, there, there are lots more certifications being offered. So, it's just, it's just a different approach and a different mindset, but, yeah. That kind of two-way street there, the school-wide and the elective, now the elective.
Yeah, and by the way, I was contacted by Mrs. Jockman today about doing some mentoring and stuff like that, so, I just want, you to understand, just as a slide deal for me, I don't know what the significance is, and they just being the workforce.
I, I, yep, I get it, I understand.
Thank you. Anybody else touch on it? Dana, anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Great for, for school.
We still have the board cut the building presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean us.
No, please, I hate to, I have a genuine speed in front of us. I apologize.
That's okay, we're used to it, I'm just kidding.
Mr. Ming, I, I'd kind of like to see some electricity from the, I mean, it's not, not just plumbers, HBCP.
Well, I win, I win the main race in almost every category, but public speaking is not one I would be better at than Miss Ming, so I apologize for that. My name's Jennifer Ming, I am a counselor at Garden City High School. This is our counseling department, so tonight we're going to just go over some of the things that we do. We've been gifted with a couple of extracurricular positions in the last couple of years, so we're really excited about that. We wanted to share with you all the little ways that we're using all of our people. So, I thought it was kind of good to share with you a day in the life of a counselor, which all of us, it's different for all of us. And I, last, it was probably two weeks ago, maybe a week ago, I was in doing senior conferences in the classrooms with a group of old seniors. I get a text from the, from another teacher that said, I'm leaving the nurse's office, one of your students, he wants some pills, so they need advice, is there, believe Emily, Ms. Hamlin, to go deal with that. That took up like an hour, you know, just what we do. And then as I was walking the student out to the, to be escorted to the emergency room, I come back in and I met with an administrator, I've been looking all over for you, I said, oh gosh, and he said, we just really need to get this student out of here for a second. And, and I just like remembered laughing to myself and out loud, actually, like, my job is so weird. Like, this is not even ten-thirty and we've dealt with all of these things that are really good deals. And most of you have teenagers, so you know that everything in their life is the most important thing that we're going to deal with and, and it is, they don't care really about what else you're dealing with, they expect you to drop everything that you're doing, no matter what it is, and deal with their, their problem. Now, I don't even remember what I did just today, but that was a crazy morning and I laughed because I thought this is, this is just what we do. Like, our council, we do individual student conferences, about all sorts of things, we work on their schedules, obviously. We deal with new students weekly, F-list, so every Monday, or Sunday, Monday, we get an F-list and we try and look at those, so we can intervene and help students in the classroom, in the, with their classes if they're not passing. Semester school stat, our student assistance team, all of us are on our stat teams. Academic advising, that's really big right now, October is a huge month for college prep, scholarships, the FASFA just opened up. College applications are getting started, we have our PSAT, pre-ACT tests that we're getting, you know, we're pushing right now. Socially emotional counseling, which never ends, that's something that we all deal with. That involves conflict resolution, parent engagement, recommendation letters, I mean, it's just, you can see, these are all over the place. And like, probably, but this is just what, this is what we do, a lot of different things. A lot of different things. Brianna Dennis, she is, this is the start of her second year at Garden City High School in the Freshman Academy. She's not with us tonight, her, she's not, her present is actually Bowen from Ness City that has suffered a brain injury, that's a football player, so she's actually gets to be with family today, so we miss her. She's great, she has 562 students in the Freshman Academy. That's what, that's the last that I wrote. And I'm not sure if you all are aware, but the state recommends a one counselor for 250 students. So you know that she's, she's got a lot. And, and so, and she does a lot of social emotional counseling. I can say this because I was there for several years. Freshmen are just a special group. And they do need a lot of support, a lot of emotional support. She does behavior contracts, stat monitoring, and is just there for all of those students, so. Mr. Vicente is, this is a new position for us. He's our Avidist counselor. This is his first year, obviously. He was at, he was the counselor that went back between Kenneth Henderson and Horace Good in the past couple of years. He has 97 students on his caseload, so that's perfect. But those 97 students are all rollbacks, mostly considered freshmoors. So students that did not have enough credits to be a sophomore, but obviously they're not freshmen. So we call them, we have a special name for those students, they're the freshmoors. Those students that have anywhere from zero credits to five, if you have five and a half credits, that's when you get to be promoted to sophomore year. So all, all different levels there, that's thanks, thanks to COVID and remote learning. I, when I was in the Freshman Academy, there was one year that I had 16 rollbacks and I cried because I thought for sure I still lost my job because that seemed like a lot of rollbacks. And that was the year that we went from the 21 to the 24 credit, or 20, 26 and a half to 24 credit. So then we required more credits to move on to the next level, so that added and included that number. But he's got 97 students that are not on track to graduate. So that's, this is a huge number. He, he's busy all day long with social emotional, looking at their grades, helping the kids in every, help whichever way that they can. Because as you know, when you have a student with one credit or zero credits, it's incredibly difficult for them to graduate on time. We, we have a really good relationship with alternative school, but they, we don't have anywhere for these 97 students to go. They're with us. And we have to try and get them to graduate on time. So thankfully, Mr. Vicente, he works with them and he put them all, mostly all of them in tutorial classes. He works with them in the edgenuity lab, so they're still doing some edgenuity classes to try and get caught up in night school, but most of these kids will come to night school. And now, of course, we'll utilize summer school however we can. But this position was so needed for this time that, that we're in. And, I don't know, we're just very thankful, but it's, we're all supporting him and doing whatever we can because this is a tough, with 97 kids. I would, I wouldn't trade my 300 and whatever I have for those 97, very easily, because that's, that's hard, it's a hard job. So, um, he's not here to teach, he'll just soccer, I believe, play that soccer tonight. But Brandon Fisher is here. He is the Art and Communications Counselor. He has about 330 students. Brandon is really, helps us a lot in charge of our spapers, and I don't say in charge of, like, give back, that's kind of scary. But he helps us with trainings or anything that we need there. He's also the LGBTQ advocate or resource or any, he keeps us up to date on anything new. He's on some committees that he goes to, um, trainings or whatever, and he is able to share that information with us. And then bullying education. Mr. Alvarez is in Guatemala, like, obviously needs small children somewhere. I don't know exactly what he's doing there, but he does.
Computer.
Yeah.
Really is.
Like, he's been working with three kids with violence and puberty. Amazing, so he, we're so, so lucky to have him. This is his, and Brandon is a starter, they're both with their third year at GCHS. So Mr. Alvarez has about 317 students, he's in the Trade Academy. He has been really working with our Spanish-speaking population. So if any of you have noticed, like, the, the Spanish Facebook pages and anything like that, that is what he's doing. He's taking on a, such a huge need. And our Spanish-speaking families just love having somebody that they can communicate with, that they don't have to go through an interpreter before. And it's what we've just put, Mr. Ken and Mr. Vicente, um, both, they, they, um, they take care of that for us, so we're very grateful. This is Ms. Hamlin, um, in our Health Academy, she has about 330 students. Ms. Hamlin does pretty much anything that anybody needs her to do, and she does it really well. So it's really hard to kind of pick things that she's specifically in charge in, in charge of. Um, our CNA, with our students, she makes sure all of that is lined out, our edgenuity. She was thankfully the person that kind of set that all up for us last year and really helped us with our, getting our students and everything that we need. And we still have some aftermath of that, that we're working with, um, night school or whatever, and Ms. Hamlin is helping with that. She does our tutoring too, I know Mr. Reming talked about some tutoring option, or opportunities for students. She actually had, I guess she could pay for it, so it's not like you totally.
I volunteer your time.
But she does do that on Saturdays, so she's able to help our, our tutoring. And she's a new member of the Franklin Council, she helps with our forning, she, she makes, um, when they come, it's really tricky, messy, really. Like, we're transferred somewhere to put them, so Ms. Armstrong, Ms. Hamlin takes that on, thankfully. Um, Ms. Armstrong, she's in the Career Center. She does a lot of stuff. So she used to be the Trade Academy Counselor, but now with, when we created this position, it, she took over a lot of the things to help us, like our AP, our IPAS, she's doing the IPAS, the mentoring lessons during, during Wednesday mentorings. That SBL lesson, mentoring lesson, just anything with mentoring, she's really taken on testing, AP coordinator, newsletters. If you've seen the newsletters, that is Ms. Armstrong. Hoby, leadership team, she puts the Buffalo Supply Station together, all of the goodies the kids love, helping with that. She helps with our ESSs and ECT prep and a lot of stuff. This is Eric Boyen, she is, this is another new position. So this is our Case State Career, Case State Career, College and Career Counselor. So she is located in our Career Center, we're so, so happy to have her. She will help college students with anything related to college. If we need someone to help with FASDA, she's the gal. If we need them to help with college applications, getting scholarships out there, anything, she is. So she's going to take a lot of our plates, even though we're all so involved in that process, that is, that is her. I don't know, my slide. I don't know, I really, I don't know, maybe it was a package or something, but I, I don't know.
I know what her slide says. She has about 370 students, quite a majority of the upper part. She shares some of the ESL duties, which is huge, working with those students too, because they're new to our community. And she works with Kim Steele, she's our, she's on site counsel, she's our department head. She does the mentoring lessons, save of the day, what else would save? But I don't know where your slide is. Suicide training, huge, huge part, and the bullying education. She also has, she's been our representative for us on many of our councils that are out in the community. Livwell with the, your resist group, Ms. Jennifer Keely has another part of it too. So, and also just, um, she, I'm going to brag on her for a second, she's the heart of it. Like today, I'm in her office, she's like, we're going to do, think a kid, like, let's spread kindness, Emily. Like, let's get kindness spreading throughout the building. So that's what she was working on, how to get kids involved to like get, you know, she has that heart part of it, that she is there for the kids. And she did our You Matter Week shirts, she organized that, that type of thing. A lot of the heart and the emotion part with the kids.
The touchy-feely stuff, really, that's kind of.
Well, you're the heart and I'm like, that's.
So we've, we've brought to, we're always trying to make things better and do more and, um, just, just trying to do, to make the GCHS a better place. And we're trying to get parents involved, we're doing these outreach seminars this year. In October, we're going to have a seminar on how to be a good digital parent. Drugs, mental health, getting connected for service, healthy and safe dating relationships, personal safety in college, 101 for parents. So those were just some ideas that we brainstorm of ways that, of things that we would like for parents, information for parents to have. Hopefully, parents come, because sometimes they don't, but we're, we're going to try. And the first one is having a good digital parent, like keeping your phone, your kid's phone at night. And I don't care how good your kid is, keep their phone at night, and then they won't be on it all night, or they won't get notifications or whatever. So we'll, we'll do little things like that, not like lectures, but more just informational. We're also, we did the You Matter Week, which that has been, we started that in the last three years. And we've always had a suicide prevention week, but I, I wanted to change the name of the suicide prevention to the You Matter, focusing on, on that. So we've done, we did that, and we just wrapped that up. Having a senior success fair, so that was new this year. We, we had several different areas of, of topics for seniors to come with their parents. We had NCAA, we had scholarships, we had college come, colleges come around the track to be a part of that. We had military was there. Kansas workforce, we also had, went over, or talked to the parents about how to make sure your kids are going to graduate and looking at all of that information. So that was new this year. We always have anti-bullying week, that's this week currently. Presentation in the junior classrooms to tell them, talk to them about what they need to be prepared for as juniors. I, I was in talking to some juniors today and they're, they're just, they're not ready in their minds, which they need to be. So that was kind, that's kind of what we're going to be talking to them about, FASDA workshops. And we're going to work with Ms. Eric Boyen, so that's going to apply to Kansas. Let's say, you guys have probably heard about that, where you can come to the college, or to the high school, they can come and they can apply for colleges. And many colleges waive their application fee on these days, so it's a really big event. Some don't, but all the counselors help with that. Ms. Armstrong organizes that with Ms. Eric Boyen. Inspiration Day at the Community College, Freshman Academy, Career Day, so we do do a career day, helping them choose which academy they'd like to go into. Snacks and ads, that's where we feed them and help them with scholarship apps and any other types of ads. Enrollment, college 101. Ms. Armstrong sits with a group of kids and whoever signs up and gives them like a little binder and a little helpful tips for college. And then, of course, our senior awards ceremony, which is the end of the year. Ms. Armstrong, do you want to talk about this?
Last year, I received a grant to supply the Buffalo Supply Station from Western Kansas Community Foundation. And it was $2,000 and it lasted pretty much from December to, and the beginning of May-ish, was pretty thin at the end. This year, so far, it has been empty. And I applied through National Honor Society back at the end of May. And I just found out Friday that we were awarded a $2,000 grant. So we'll be able to get shampoo and deodorant. I got some toothbrushes and toothpaste donated this year, that's very popular, actually. Socks, and then the snacks, peanut butter crackers, mac and cheese, those kinds of things. But we don't want kids to be hungry at night or on the weekends, or even during the day. Like, you know, 7:50 to 11:30 is kind of a long time, you know, if they can't afford to bring their own snacks with them, so. Anyways, we're really excited about that.
And this is Kim Steele and Darlene Dillon, so I wanted to put a slide on there about them. And they're, they're not part of the counseling department per se, but without them, we would really struggle. Kim is in charge for our ESL department and then Darlene is the Special Education Department. So we work closely with them and we share students. So they're just really huge, that's a huge part of our, our.
I just have a comment, I know your main focus is the kids, but getting this parent to high school, I really appreciate it. So if you don't see my senior in the next few months, go find her because she needs to get her applications in. That's just my plug for myself, but no, thank you for all you do, I really appreciate it.
We work on our stocking skills, don't worry, like, we find ways to find. I like to go to fast food restaurants where I know they're at, it benefits me to get Chocolate Mall and to get their diploma name. That is what I'm doing right now, yes.
Thanks for all you do, it's very much appreciated. And thank you for responding quickly to, to emails that, like, when they realize I have court, so thank you so much.
My, my kids, these are the two little faces that I probably saw the most as my kids went through school. They were the social emotional support for my kids. Yeah, my kids have a lot of advantages, but, you know, what really mattered was what these two had to offer. Honestly, since they love the college, and now a lot of that burden falls to me, I really would like to just have a guy. I'm pretty sure I'm not near as effective. I still have a really big place in my heart of what they do.
Dana.
Hey, I just want to add, along with all the things, is I really appreciated the up in like Facebook presence. Your posts are awesome, I always try to like or even share them, just to try and get more people because I think they've been great, I think starting last year, but particularly this year too. And they're doing a great job online.
Yeah, Ms. Armstrong.
You know, it, it's been for several years, I've been kind of agonized over how you're short-staffed in high school. And still, I was, but do you think those two new positions are, are they replacing something? Or are they brand new and still helping that?
They are definitely taking a load off of us. I mean, we have 97 rollbacks and those would have been, you know, dispensed monks of Saul, which we all kept some rollback, so those are just the real.
Those are just the freshmen and sophomores, I still, we still have our junior, senior, upper class.
Yeah, and I even kept some freshmen, those that I have already worked with, so. But that, that in itself will just help us. And the goal is, the idea is, once those students get on track, then they will go into an academy and will get a whole new load. I think we're all realizing now how, how hard that's going to be and how many are going. We pray that we'll never get, we'll never have another rollback here like we did last year, you know? That we're so happy about the graduation rate, Mr. Norby texted me when he got that information, he was so, so proud. Then, but we had the conversation. But in a couple of years, it's going to be probably not so great because of this. And we're, we're tasked with trying to get 97 students on, on grade level, which is, is hard. And we have every opportunity in the world, but, and we'll get, surely, hopefully, we can get some of those to the alternative school or virtual. But, you know, we, we don't know with that, and, and so we just have to plan on that they'll all be with us for the four years or three.
I'll actually, to answer that question, when we were at the old building, we were at this level of counselors. Plus, we had three full-time secretaries that only helped the counselors. But when Heather Reed left, Chris Tanner moved into her position and the career counselor was cut. When Elaine Shalesky retired, her position was cut. When Joaquin Padilla, he did go to the new building with us, but then his position was also cut. So through the years, we have lost three counselors and we only have a half-time secretary at the current.
Well, that was my sense, and we've talked about this once, you know, off and on annually, I think. And so it's kind of cool, first of all, to hear this report, it's exciting. And you all are amazing people. But I also want to not lose track of where we were and maybe where we need to be. And so I have to ask a question just for clarification. You know, source of funding is always something we have to deal with and the leadership deals with. And are we use, are we able to utilize some of the COVID relief? I'm probably not using the right term here, but some of these special funds for three years for one or one. for one or both of these positions, or?
So one, I believe, one of these positions is funded, was funded through the ESRS process that we did last summer. So it will be a possibility to continue to fund that for two more years with that ESR funding. The other is a two- or a three-year grant that we got through Canton State University that provided that, that other position. So that's where the two.
Right, because Erin Glenn's position is not funded through these garden city college schools, it's through. If we, and my understanding is that we'll have that for two, maybe, maybe three years, and then if we wanted to keep that position, then we will, and maybe even we, we start to pay some of it after two years, and then after three, like, it's all our responsibility, we have to do that, so.
Well, getting kids up, I mean, and with the environment that you've painted, picture you've painted, not only the excitement, but also the challenges and the numbers, is, is quite the task, first of all. And then, over the next couple of years, we'll have to think very carefully about funding to sort of fill in the gaps, because we, you know, amazingly get another grant or something, I don't know, less than that, but. And that's not unique for the district, I think, looking forward. But the high school and all of the work that's done in the entire district to get these kids up to that point, and then to launch them into graduation, or whatever they're dealing with. And you guys play such a key role in that, this is one of the ones, which, this is another one of those places where you don't want to skip one spending.
Well, and that's the thing, too, like, if we went back to Mrs. Armstrong's slide, when we got that position and she was able to move into that three years ago. I just will never forget the day, I was supposed to be doing our PSAP, which was huge, because we have a lot of students that have potential national merits capability, but I had a student that was suicidal. And I had a room full of 50 kids that needed bubble sheets done, because they needed that, because they were in the PSAP running, and I had a student having the absolute worst day. And I, it, I hung in there, people hung in there with me. We were there till 11:00 PM that night, moving things around. But when we were able to get that position, and Mrs. Armstrong was able to, to take that as our, not, I don't, and I don't just say that as our veteran, like, she's able to navigate all of that for us. It just helped take off that feeling of having to triage everything every day. Like, you want to be there for these kids, but it's a really hard feeling some days when you have to pick and choose how to navigate, and when, especially when there's time sensitive. Today, we were trying to figure out something on Skyward, we were FaceTiming each other.
Yeah, we were.
And trying, because it had to do with the scholarship, like, you know? But yet, I had Mr. Mees knocking on my door, this girl, like, he's trying to, like, bring this girl in.
I have to sit down.
And so I was wondering, too, on the, on the support staff he used to have, that's the kind of thing they would be?
A secretary would have helped me with those bubble sheets, and a hard, but we.
Well, and the secretary could have ran the report, that's the best.
Yeah, and we don't, we haven't been able to keep anybody yet in our halftime, we don't have a secretary. We, we don't. And so, right, so luckily, we have admin that are very supportive of us and take care of us, like, our mental health needs, you know, because sometimes it's not easy. The, the counselor needs a counselor, you know, or a Dr. Pepper, or whatever's happening, but, but that's what these positions do. Like, because there's just times when they come to your door, or a teacher calls you, and you, you gotta triage, and it's, it's, it's a hard feeling.
Well, you're in a position, as the teachers are too, the classroom would be taking on some of these persons. And I would imagine you can only do so much of that before you, you need counseling yourself, so to speak.
Well, but that's why we're so grateful for these positions, and like, the support that we have felt from admin and from the board. I mean, I, I truly am not just saying that, because to be able to rest a little bit at night, because you were able to see more kids, because, like, I had senior awards, that was my responsibility the two weeks when I'm trying to make sure they're gonna graduate. And Mrs. Armstrong has it now, but she has to do it during AP testing. So like, you know, we, just long hours and balloon rides and the, getting balloons into vans and trying to get it all done. So we really do appreciate it.
And we, I don't want to stand up here and think, oh, poor us, like, we're still so overworked. Because we are so grateful for the positions that we, we have now, and we loved our jobs, weirdly enough, before we had those positions. Now, it's just, it's, it's just getting better, and we're able to do more, more things that we all really are passionate about, rather than just the bare minimum, because that's all.
Like, I was able to do more, more work-based learning, because my things had shifted. She did U-Matter, like, there were things that we could shift and add. These parent seminars, these things are what we're gonna be able to add, because things are pivoted to, to free up a little space, so.
Well, the numbers are interesting, but we don't get to the numbers without that, it's appreciated.
Just remember, all of us, like, a couple of years, we're like, why is our graduation rate so low? Remember, we had 97 rollbacks that year, so.
Well, yes.
Yeah, so thank you for all you do, we appreciate all your hard work, and hopefully, we'll get those positions filled soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
I might just come in and give thanks to our counselors, they do an amazing job. So tonight, the high school was scheduled to do a building report. We're kind of back in the mode to kind of start those again, and so we kind of combined to do, just because it, kind of their request, the things related a little bit. And so you kind of got your first building report, you did that to the swing of things, but it wasn't really titled as a building report, but we won't make them come back again and do another building report, so. We'll get to you, can we move on now?
Can I say one, a quick? And I've noticed some of the schools back east, particularly one in Manhattan, that, that utilize, I don't know if you call them, well, parent support, or students who are studying to be teachers, things like that. We don't have a four-year college here locally, but, that, to fill in some of those gaps to support counselors. And I guess we probably don't have, I mean, do counselors have parents?
Nah, not typically.
Okay, just a question.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Ms. Mees. Okay, moving on to Horstin Middle School footprint. So we have two teachers with us tonight from Horstin School, Elena Bates Aaronson.
It's just Bates, yeah.
It's just Bates, okay, thank you. And Jose Alfredo Anaya?
Yep.
I'm gonna share some of the work they've done.
Can I pull up a presentation on Drive?
Watch, you guys, so hard to get access to Google, are you?
Is this homework assignment?
Okay, so as Dr. Collins said, I am Elena Bates, most often called Lainey.
And I'm Alfredo Anaya.
I'm sorry, it's not being shared, I have. So we both teach at Horstin Middle School, and part of the district framework is every middle school student, every secondary student receives 20 minutes a day of independent reading time, which is unstructured, I don't want to say unstructured. It's not teacher-directed, we do not tell them what they're going to read. It's their opportunity to read independently for pleasure. And the reason this matters, because I was on the cohort that put this into place in 2010, a tiny sliver of our data, and what research shows us, is that classroom libraries aren't a great equalizer. Sometimes we have students who won't go to the library or can't get to the library. In our building, we have to rotate days. Every teacher gets one day every two weeks to take their whole class. We do have the ability to send students on passes, two or three at a time, but then you lose the ability to conference with those students while they're there. And there's also the counter thing right now of our buildings. We're not really allowing a whole lot of hall wandering right now, due to some TikTok shenanigans. Classroom libraries also remove the hurdles to getting books into students' hands. There's not a delay at the start of the year. We're not waiting for seventh grade to do orientation to the library before eighth grade can get in. Which I don't deny that seventh grade needs that, but it does put a two-week lag on the ability to get books into students' hands. Barbara found that seventh-grade girls are not only reading for class, they're reading for pleasure reasons or for personal reasons. They're trying to clarify their beliefs, and granted, they're seventh graders, so they'll do it here four more times in their life, at least. But that's where they're starting. They're trying to figure out who they are, and discover that they're not alone, that their experiences are shared. And we heard the high school presentation talk about those social emotional self-regulations, and reading is a key component in that. Teaching practices have a lasting effect on students' ability and willingness to read. And when students have a teacher who says, hey, I know you love sports, this book made me think of you. Almost guaranteed, that student is gonna say, oh, they thought of me, and they're gonna take that book and go. They may not be the whole thing, but they will engage with it and come back to you for more conversation, because now you've made that one-on-one connection with them. You think what I said? And like I said, this is a teeny, tiny piece of the puzzle.
Okay, so what is the Book Club Foundation? Penny Kittle, a teacher began this foundation in 2012. She had the idea that every student was like a shopper going into a bookstore, and every student has particular interests, but as teachers, we're not always able to meet those student interests in our classroom libraries, especially with a lot of the shrinking budgets in many school districts. And a lot of us just cannot purchase books with our own money from our paychecks. So it's definitely an issue that we can't update our libraries as much as we would like to. So in 2013, the inaugural year for the grant, 40 teachers applied, and now the foundation receives more than 400 applications a year, and they give away thousands of dollars for books. This grant is also international and is given to recipients in the United States and Canada. So it's a pretty big deal, when a teacher receives it.
Since the inaugural year, there have been four grant recipients in the state of Kansas, two of whom are standing in this room teaching single. And we thought that was kind of a big deal. We go book club in our classroom every day, the grant helps. But one thing I was doing before the grant, every single day, I pick a book from my classroom library, and I do a book talk with my students. This is how we start class. Sometimes, they come from, backing up, they come from all the different sections of my room. We have begun our study of the literature of the Holocaust, and so right now, all my books are coming from that section and war literature. But we will continue to move based on that. I get up, I tell them what the story is about, and I tell them if there's anything about the author that might connect with them, and I read them a teaser of the book to try to get them interested. And then I have a very super-high-tech book request system. They fill out an index card, put it in the box, and when the book comes back, I give it to the next students. And then I also get to do readers advisory, which is, I'm not going to lie, the highlight of my day, where a student comes to me and says, I want a book about an athlete who's also a nerd. Okay, let's go find it. That's part of what brings me joy as a teacher. And building in activities like book speed dating, which we were able to do this year thanks to COVID not having us quite so unable to share materials. But they get three minutes with a book, and they get five books, and they get to speed date the book, look at it, go through it, rank it, yes, no, maybe.
And some of the things that I like to do is I like to feature different books based on, like, what's going on. Band Book Week was last week, so I did a lot with that with my students. There's also Hispanic Heritage Month, so I try to feature books that were related to that. One thing that I think is really important is that as teachers, we have to model reading. So whenever I give my students 20 minutes to read or have not much time, I'm walking around monitoring them, but I'm also reading a book at the same time. So I think that's really important for them to see us as readers as well.
Why did we apply? I had been growing my classroom library since 2017, and by 2020, I was steadily increasing what I had thanks to the LINK grant, which we had for three years, which provided $250 per teacher in our building. But $250, when you're buying those newer published books that look fair, doesn't go that far. And I was very lucky in that my ex-husband made it a priority as well, that we built money into our own budget that we could get used books into the classroom library. But that's not, that can't go forever. And so a couple of years before 2020, the Horstin English teachers had done an independent book study on our own of Penny Kittle's Book Club. And I was like, you know what, I'm gonna apply for the Book Club grant, because the worst they can say is no. And I thought, you know, if I get this, maybe I'll get $500, maybe I'll, I don't know. But it'll be something I can put in their names.
And I applied because having a diverse classroom library has always been a big goal for me as a teacher. Growing up, I loved reading, I liked Harry Potter books, Old Yeller, Gugu's books. But I never felt like the books that I read truly represented me. So since I've been a teacher for the last seven years, I've noticed that there's a huge lack of diversity in characters and novels that the students are reading. I am a first-generation Hispanic college graduate, and I know that a lot of my students come from similar backgrounds. So I want to be able to provide them with books that will interest them and will reflect who they are, but will also teach them about other cultures.
I'm very lucky, I mean, I've got Anne of Green Gables, easily family in Harry Potters, but my child does not have that ability, and I want books, like what Alfredo said, that represent her. So feedback from our community so far has been, you just got your books today, right?
Yeah.
I can't wait to see how this goes. I've had mine for a year, because I'm a 2020 resident, Alfredo's a 2021. I have teachers in the building who will bring their at-risk or their reluctant readers to me and say, here, help. And that, that, I love building those relationships that way. And a student, as a seventh grader, I loaned him a book from the war literature section, and he came back this year and said, I borrowed the first one, can I have the next one? Yes. I have a 24-year-old former student I stayed good friends with, who messaged me this weekend and said, hey, can I borrow your Percy Jacksons, I want to go back to Camp Applewood. So I was able to do that handoff today. And building those relationships, and getting emails from my former students who are now in the high school saying, hey, I have to read a book, and I have no idea what to do. Okay, let's talk, let's figure out where your interests are, let's get some books in your hands. Those, that just makes everything worthwhile.
And I put on there that I should be receiving my books within the next couple of weeks. I actually got it today, so that was exciting. I did have my students complete a reading interest inventory at the beginning of the school year, just to see what kind of books they wanted to read. And I saw that a lot of them wanted to get graphic novels, which I really like graphic novels, too, so that didn't surprise me as much. It surprised me that a lot of them like historical fiction. And something that I tried to order to push them out of their comfort zone a little bit was some nonfiction books. So I ordered different ones about different things, like the Birmingham Children's March. We're reading a novel called Refugee right now, so I ordered some books about refugees from Central and South America. And then I got books about just Native American history in the United States, just different nonfiction things that they could read about.
The books I was able to bring tonight, I believe, The Help, calls in historical fiction. Autobiography with my dead brother is Walter D. Meyer, and he was sort of the original bad boy author who appealed to a lot of our kids. Since he passed away, Jason Reynolds has kind of picked up that role, and the students go through both of their books voraciously. Hey, Kiddo is a nonfiction graphic novel about a young man's experience following his mother's passing. And a lot of our students, especially our students who come from one-parent households, really respond well to that graphic novel. And I'll be honest, when I started teaching, I was like, graphic novels, that's, that's not real literature. Yes, I, it's too much for my brain. There's so much going on on the page, and so much they're absorbing through the pictures and the text, and the facial expressions, amazing what they get out of that. I can't remember the title of it, but it's about the Twin Towers. Thank you, yes, it's about the Twin Towers. And Pride is a retelling of Pride and Prejudice. So that allows me to gateway them into more complex literature by giving them a story that they're like, oh, I know this story, I just gotta go from here. So we wanted to say ways that USD 457 can help other teachers with book love. Supporting and protecting the 20-minute IR framework is a key one. I have not heard any word that anyone wants to get rid of it. I have not heard any word that anyone wants to get rid of it, but just always that that's a big deal for us and what we do with it. Um, I don't know if he's listed, especially with COVID, but we've had other grant recipients who have had their district offer a cash match for a book club grant recipient. So my grant was two thousand dollars.
Mine was five hundred dollars.
Yeah, and I think the difference is in the COVID and what was being donated. But the ability to cash match, I know we've had private, or we've had grant recipients from other states who've had private donations. This is kind of a quirky one for my room, but if you've ever toured Horace Good Middle School, you know there's four rooms that are shaped like somebody stepped on a trapezoid. I'm in one of them. And the approval of furniture requests for durable shelving that is specific to that classroom would go a long way. Because right now I am out of space. There is nowhere to put kids for more books. And obviously the kids have to take part in it. Um, providing professional development opportunities for teachers regarding intended reading and its benefits. Kelly Gallagher has come and spoke in our district before. He is sort of the, uh, other side of the coin with Penny Kittle. He's a fantastic resource and I emailed him first up and he's gotten back to me. So he's incredibly pulse, finger on the pulse. Um, instruct, training instructional coaches on ways to support IOT. We're very lucky, we have Chris Duncan who's brand new and he's super engaged, he wants to know what we're doing, wants to know how he can help. Um, certified librarians, we really need certified librarians available to us whenever possible. We're very lucky, our para is amazing, she comes to us whenever, she's not sure how to proceed, she'll come to us because she knows that we're the ones who would know. But that certified librarian or more training for the library para is worth it.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Assistant law with Kelly for asking this question.
Sure.
Why are you a certified librarian?
Because the field of library and information science, I'm halfway through my master's on it, which is not a plug for a position, but it's so much more than just checking books in and out or ordering the books. Helping students get back to primary documents and understanding what their significance is. Teaching those explicit research skills, but also how information and its storage and management is changing rapidly. And those simply aren't skills that a library para has. Like we said, ours is fantastic with getting books in and out of the kids' hands and getting readers involved. But a certified librarian can go into that history classroom or that science classroom and, okay, let's pull up the primary documents from, they're doing the Revolutionary War right now in eighth grade. Helping those teachers and providing additional instruction with how information is managed.
So, when, this is about the skills involved in accessing information.
Partly, yes.
Answer questions?
Expand, please.
Well, I'm, I'm trying not to inject my opinion into this, but I'm trying to interpret what you said.
Uh, well, I would be more than happy to talk you through.
Yeah, we should, yeah. Instead of dragging up your theories.
But, uh, in another time, I'd be happy to talk.
Let me clarify, I'm not arguing this as a certified librarian. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure everyone understands what they bring besides the ability to check books in and out.
Yes, um, one of the big things in librarianship right now is what's called metadata, which is data about data. And one of the things, an example of metadata that might be well-known is using the twenty-three and me DNA library, or DNA bank to catch the Golden State Killer. And it's those sort of researching skills and ability to look at a problem and go around. It's librarians who are coming up with those and information specialists. So a certified librarian would bring all manner of different approaches that a library para doesn't have the background for.
Does a certified librarian help, um, kids understand, um, which information to?
Ideally, yes. Yes.
And which to ignore.
Yeah, and that would be part of that researching and being able to go back to the primary documents and sources.
A skill that we can argue.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to include some pictures because like I said, trapezoidal room, but I've got a wonderfully supportive administrator in Mr. Springsteen. And anytime I've come to him and said, I need a bookshelf, he has not asked any questions. He has just made sure I got one. But my room is a little, um, so would we use flammable? So I do organize my books, you can see the stickers, I don't know if I zoomed in enough, but they're organized in organic ways that allow the students to find them. This right here is the paranormal section, action-adventure, novels in verse, poetry. On the other side of this shelf is sports, coming of age, stories about heroes. Over here, we've got some author specifics, science, Latinx, Asian authors, graphic novels. Books about pets because for some reason they really like to make themselves cry periodically. Um, April Henry's down here, she came to Garden City about three years ago. She's one of the most beloved authors that my students have. Just more books that we're able to bring in. I've got all the history and Holocaust together, true crime, books about presidents. These are my, uh, autobiographies and biographies. And that's what the room looks like from the door. Don't mind their textbooks, that class is an organizational hiccup. But as you can see, it's a little chaotic. Anything you'd like to add?
Um, no, but I did have a similar issue trying to get a bookshelf this year. I wanted one and I was told to get it with my classroom budget, which I was like, it's not really a lot to begin with. And I use that for my supplies, so I just ended up getting one out of pocket. I mean, I don't know if we had some available at school, but just the furniture issue sometimes.
So, any additional questions for us?
I have just one more question.
Go.
I think, I think there's community members who, um, when you develop a love of reading and everything else, and what you've taught about yourselves and for your students is a commonality that I can identify with and I think a lot of people I know can identify with.
I've been very lucky when the Audrants were packing to move, Sheila brought books, boxes and boxes to my house. Um, I know that there's been times that in our staff, we've emailed and said, hey, I've got three copies of this. Who else would like them? And so we're able to put books in each other's classrooms as well. And we've got no shame about sending kids to each other's rooms as well as the library to look for books.
Can you comment about how your, um, your grants or your individual book fit with what the libraries have? And are you, are you looking at what the libraries have and trying to augment that? Or how do you make sure this isn't done with other libraries?
That's a good question.
I think, I mean, to me it seems like when I go to the library, it's like a new selection, but it might have been from like six months ago. And then like, I mean, as with everything, kids wanna read the latest thing and it's, it's hard for libraries to get that and get their inventory updated as quickly as like we could get something and have kids be interested in it for a while, I feel like.
Um, also I feel our library is a little restricted in what she's able to get. I don't know why, I haven't been able to figure that part out yet, but we were, we had free reign pretty much. And for three years before I got the grant, I had been keeping a wish list on Amazon of titles or topics the students had told me they wanted more books about. So when I got this grant, the first place I went to was my Amazon wishlist and I just started ordering those. So.
Do you think it's true that if you have the books located in a closer proximity than the library and they're books that you have a certain knowledge of, that it's a smoother, um, scene to try to get the kids involved with it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's geographically, Horace Good is interesting. The library is on the furthest south side of the building and the ELL highway is in the furthest north. So it's not easy to get the whole class to the library. Whereas if the books are on the shelf and we're talking about something in class and it happens to come up organically, I can just walk over and say, here, there's a bunch of books that would fit if you want to know more about this. And they can take each other to the shelf and say, I really liked this series, you should check it out. Which a kid recommending something to another kid, nothing goes further than that. And sometimes I think the ability to have that one-on-one conversation with a teacher quietly about something they wanna know more about, they don't feel as exposed as in our big echoey library. But to answer your redundancy question, I did go down and look through our library to see what was available as well. And looked at the database as well. So to make sure that it wasn't overlapping if there wasn't a need to overlap.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
I'm really excited when I saw them on Facebook.
Yeah, congratulations, it's been a huge adventure.
Yeah.
Yeah, congratulations. And I, um, am so excited about your excitement about books and getting students excited about books. Um, and I, I'm happy that I, uh, get like the hands-on, easy access. So I guess my question is, how much, because it is my understanding too, and I don't know if it was the new ELA curriculum or another way to get presented with so many different things, but that there was a, a large on, like access to online books. Is that, did I make that up or do we have that or do you do that a lot with students as well?
Um, yes and no. There is an access to the books that are available through the textbook curriculum, but a lot of them are ones that the copyright is expired. And so it lacks a lot of diversity or modern issues that the kids connect with. Um, it's a lot of what's considered the literary canon and there's value in the literary canon, I'm never gonna say there's not. But it can be very off-putting, especially for our struggling readers or reluctant readers, to give them away in.
Yeah, it's books that are in the public domain, so they're significantly older than a lot of the, which makes them a little bit more challenging to read, especially for middle schoolers.
Every year I have several who are working their way or want to read more on the AP list, so we do use that as well.
And do you collaborate with the library at all because we have, maybe they have great free online, like Hoopla and other, you know, free online digital, I just think about easy access and when you're at home and when you're bored, you know, do you talk with students or connect them with those resources too?
Yes. Um, actually, seventh grade last year, when we realized that COVID was going to put a serious monkey wrench in our IR program, the seventh grade team took the initiative to contact the Kansas State Library to get us the ability to assign all of our students a library card through the cloud library.
And we did that this year as well, just so they have that as an extra resource for books.
Yep. And we also do Hoopla, I love Hoopla, I actually use that a lot in my teaching if I want to hear, have them hear somebody reading fluently that's not me. Um, and I talk about using Hoopla myself when I go driving to get audiobooks and listen to them. Hoopla is a free app that you can use to check out an audiobook if any of you aren't aware. I, it's fantastic. So, yes, we do.
Awesome, that's great. Sorry, I know this was probably a bit, a bit tangent from your, um, from your quick test and getting the grant. I think you were going the extra mile, so.
Thank you.
Jeff.
I don't have anything to just been said, so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Echo that. Well, congratulations on the grants.
Thank you, thank you for letting us tell you about it, so.
You've got four? Thank you. Does this suddenly bring back?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna take, those are five of my most popular. If I don't have, um, Kiddo back tomorrow, I'm gonna have a very upset young man who's got it on his checkout list. Thank you, Oreo. Thank you, guys, for having us.
Thanks for coming. Hey, I'm finished business, COVID update.
All right, we're gonna kind of get used to seeing, how can I make that, uh, maybe I could change that just to surprise me next time, I don't know. So we'll walk through our, our charts that we have, um, we can just see a little bit of maybe. This is a good trend, uh-huh. So we've got, this is Penny County, new positive cases by the weekend and it is holding steady this last week. Um, and it has steadily come down since we started school. The positivity rate in the county, um, went up just a little bit and it's been a quick, but it is due to the number of cases that they're testing. Um, the actual amount of positive cases is, oh, pretty close. Local hospital COVID cases, um, we had this dip, but it did go back up again and they're seeing the ICU, um, this for again. New positive student tests, again, the orange is year-to-date and the blue is, um, by week, current positives. So we did start out rather high, but that also has kind of come down just a little bit. I'm hoping for another week it's face down, so. Number of students sent home a day. This one we're really taxing, um, I think either parents are figuring out, oh, I need to keep my kid home or, um, you know, kind of figuring out that they're gonna call me if I send them to school. So we're sending fewer kids home, um, this, this last week. And it was about the same again today. This is, um, student attendance. So the absences, uh, all absences up here in orange and the blue is for COVID reasons. And again, we're seeing that go, go down, so that's a nice trend. The weekly attendance rate because the other number is going down, this one's going up, which we like to see. I'd like to see that get just a little bit higher because next week it hit that ninety mark. We haven't done that yet this year, but that would sure be a nice thing to see on here. This is staff attendance. So the blue is all staff for all reasons. The gray is classroom staff, all reasons. And then the two bottom lines, the orange line is all staff and the yellow line is classroom staff due to COVID. So these bottom lines are COVID reasons and these are all, all absences. We'll get a little thing just a slight downward trend again. Positive staff per week, last week we only had two, so. We had one the week before, so those numbers have come down as well. This is our substitute data. Do you wanna say anything on this? Because he has kind of been the star of our evening meetings, I think, with his data as well, so.
Uh, just happy to see the upward trend, uh, thank you for the community response and people deciding you have to be substitutes. It's critically, critically important for us and, uh, yeah, last week was our highest average fill week. Uh, we were right at seventy percent fill for our requests versus fill positions. So that's been a very pleasant change that we've seen and hopefully that continues.
We like it when the positivity goes down and the subs go up because, you know, we, we each have our direction we like. So the number of students quarantined per day, so this number is also going down and we went under one hundred today. So I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed. What we have going on in the school district, uh, we have seven of our elementary schools that are currently yellow. And, um, just to clarify in case you looked at that, a couple of them are yellow but have no classrooms yellow. So what we have there is an itinerary, staff members been in the building and there was exposure within the building, but no direct exposure in the classroom, so we still turned the building yellow. So there are two classrooms that are yellow because of that. Um, we do have both intermediate middle and high school yellow. Since our last board meeting, we had one red classroom that dipped to ornalis, um, due to three exposures that were due to classroom exposures. We had twenty-two students quarantined from the fifteen through the twenty-fourth, the teachers did provide a break to those students while they were out, the teacher was out as well during that time.
Could I ask a quick question? Um, do those, those. Do those, those two, those twenty-two students, were they included in our list to qualify, count against this, I mean?
Yes, yes, that, that list is up to date.
Thank you.
Do you know if there were any other positives that came out of that class after they were quarantined, or is that?
Yes, there was. That's one of the things that I, I think we all kind of have an aha moment every once in a while, it's like, oh, that was a good thing, that happened at Charles Stones as well. So there were students that became positive after the quarantine, but it was like the quarantine worked. That's, I mean, so the health departments, you know, they saw that pattern and, and they quarantined the kiddos, but, it does seem to help to keep it from spreading in the burn again. So Michelle, um, applied for a grant, uh, for KDAH, and she found out that she was awarded that grant. That will give us an additional nurse position, which includes benefits for that nurse. That position will help with COVID monitoring, uh, vaccination clinics, and, uh, testing for staff, families, students. And then, uh, it will also cover all of the testing supplies, including courier expenses. So many times they do respond, and they have to send them off to KDAH, and that will cover those expenses. It will also cover the office supplies for, for that meaner, so the, the, the computer that she uses, for example. They also got a rapid PCR machine, so they can do the PCRs now and test them in-house and not have to send them off. So that was, that's gonna help a lot of our staff not have to wait those three or four days for it to come back. And then we will also be able to check for influenza as well. So if a student is sick, we can screen for COVID, but we can also screen for influenza. Some of the clinics that, uh, the nursing department has assisted with, um, August we had one at the high school and Horace Good. September, there was another one at the high school, and again, you'll see the, the month apart for the two different shops, one and two. There will be another one in October at the high school, um, that was actually last Friday. And then this week we'll have, both middle schools will have clinics. I don't know what time KH is at, I know Horace Good is doing theirs at the end of the day, so if people want to come in and get them to shop, for example, with their kids. It will be open until four, four to five a week. Um, on the fifteenth, we will have a food clinic for staff. And then on the twenty-first of October, there will be a community outreach food clinic at Horace Good, so this will be a drive-through back alley there, and, um, the hospital will help with that, and our school nurses will help with that. So nine to eleven in Horace Good, one in communities, Garden Village. Our nurses are kissing people. That's it for tonight. Questions?
Jeff?
Not yet. My talk's a little longer.
Okay, right back. Please say, keep up the good work.
I have anything, thank you for your information.
Happy as well, since you did.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to come up with a different design or something.
I, I like it.
Oh, okay.
Yes, rather far, I'd like to thank you for your interest.
All right, you're welcome.
Oh, thank you, Dana?
I don't have anything, thank you, Linda.
My turn?
Um, I don't have anything, I did get to hear just a bit of the reported, the city commission meeting today, and it was a lot in line with what you said, so I just was gonna give them a little bit of a shout-out. If you get an opportunity, you can go back and watch that, I thought there was some good information on there to align with what you reported, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. New business, election of delegate, and also a delegate for Kansas Association of School Boards. Delegate Assembly One on Saturday, November sixth, at eleven AM. And as part of the KASB Annual Convention and Delegate, have seven to two on Thursday, December sixteenth. Point twenty-one will be held virtually at five thirty PM. So we need to elect the delegates. Well, I don't know who all is, is discussion, who's all interested, mom there?
On November sixth is the Delegate Assembly One, and December sixteenth, December two. So one is the election for the KASB president-elect, doesn't need, that's the only thing we'd be voting on. And then Assembly Two will be the delegate legislative agenda. And there's gonna be a need, or another online opportunity on Friday at noon to go over the legislative agenda and offer input on that, um, by Zoom. Um, they canceled the two because there wasn't enough signing up for the one here, um, in person, and the one in Oakland in person. So, um, but I did half of it on Friday, court was running late, so I only got to half of it. But it was a really good discussion, so. I would encourage you, even if you're not gonna be able to go to the Delegate Assembly, to please sign up for that, because you can have your input on the agenda. There's a lot of questions on that that they have, so.
Well, you're nominated for president-elect, is that correct?
Yes, so I would prefer not to be the delegate.
And Mrs. Epic, KASB Congress, right?
Yes, but there's also virtual voting.
Alex, do you go to attend?
I am attending.
Okay, virtual?
Uh, no, I can go up personally. I mean, I don't, I don't mind doing it, but I want to make sure everybody else has the opportunity to throw their hat in. I think we just don't want that.
One delegate, and then an alternate, in case.
So Dana, do you have any input on delegate or alternate?
I do not have any interest, so if you are interested, that's great.
Uh, Janina, I, I'll, I can ask her tomorrow, I'll probably ask her tomorrow, we can, but I think we need to probably go ahead and make a motion tonight, or nominate somebody to go, or can it be a mere tiny, you know?
Can I, can I make this motion?
Yeah.
Mr. President, I believe that we need appoint yourself as the delegate, and Janine is the alternate delegate. I, I don't.
I think she's got a lot going on personally, um, she's got some, some issues going on, uh, health-wise with her brother, so.
Oh, okay.
So I think she, her time is, uh, pretty well divided up right now, from what I've talked to today.
What's that?
I'll serve as the alternate.
You want to?
You'll serve as the alternate.
Okay. Well, then I so moved accordingly, um, uh, that, that, Mr. President, you be the delegate, and, um, who the doctor here be the alternative, um, to represent UST four-five-seven, the KASB's Delegate Assembly on November sixth at eleven AM at the KASB Annual Convention, and virtually on December sixteenth at five thirty PM. That is my motion.
Say second? Okay, uh, motion's been made by Mark, seconded by Jennifer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, opposed? Thank you for the opportunity to just serve as a, an alternate, and not handing in service, the alternate.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes.
And I was being just a little bit rowdy, personally, it's not here, just nominated, you know, that was.
I defend, I can pick you up, honestly. Um, board of discussion, self-evaluation. Laura?
Um, if you haven't signed up, you can still sign up to go to the KASB conference, um, and we're doing a breakout session on the Crystal Apple Awards. So Mike Bunch is gonna be going up as well, um, and Dr. Carlin, myself, um, I'm not sure, is Roy going to help with that?
I think he's gonna be attending.
Okay.
Put it together.
Um, so I'm really excited about being a part of that, and, um, letting other school districts know how we do it here in Guard City. So I believe that's it, thank you.
Okay. Uh, oh, I continue to look forward to scheduling our retreat and following up with, um, our directive that we have some, um, ideas on our governance changes we might make. I think we were all assigning the idea that we would, um, come up with five suggestions on how our governance might improve. And I look forward to the retreat that we're gonna have, where we can throw all those ideas in the hat and, um, have open communication and, um, some nice positive collaboration on how we might improve our governance.
Dana?
Um, I really don't have much, I can let you all know that the, um, girls from City High School tennis team are your wax champions, so that was. Uh, so again, thanks to all who go above beyond to coach, or to get books, or whatever dedication may be. We have a lot of people in our district that, um, counselors, uh, still above and beyond, and, uh, that's a wonderful thing, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, well, first I misspoke on the COVID, I meant county commission, not city. Written up later, and I said that wrong. Um, I just, I know, I just want to give a shout-out to the high school and the athletic department on homecoming Friday and the games, it would really need to see a partnership between the middle schools and the high school, and having the cheerleaders there from the middle school participating. I think that helps to get more of the community out to our games, to see the camaraderie between the students and the parents and the staff. And I just think there's been a lot of positive promotion coming from the high school level in that area. And I appreciate that, because I know it's a lot of extra time and hard work from the athletic department office to coordinate all of that, so. Despite the drizzle and the cold blood, we did have a win, and it was just good to see everybody out again.
Not much, just, uh, I really appreciate the high school report, uh, in those terms. And, uh, it's really helpful to hear how the staff is adjusting to the, the current situation, and, uh, and trying to get our kids where they need to be for graduation, on or above grade levels, so that's very helpful. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I think everybody's gonna, um, not only just the school district, but everybody in general, out of public is gonna be in a unique situation by the next six to nine months, just of help and catching up and job status and all that stuff, so it's gonna be a very unique time for, I believe, all of us. Now, Dr. Carlin?
Uh, just quickly to piggyback on Jennifer's comment about the rain, it's a pleasure to tell when we have a football game, we have rain, so I'm starting to give requests for farmers, they have to.
I think it's something that.
Yes, um, with Coach Stone about when we could schedule those things, um, but in, in all seriousness, tonight you saw several examples of the dedication, uh, different groups of employees, um, and, and I'm telling you, you see that everywhere. I think if you talk to most of our kids this year, they would tell you, things are pretty normal. You know, we have a few classrooms that go yellow, or once in a while, one of these red ones, but, uh, for the most part, our kids are getting a pretty normal school year. That's not happening by accident, there is a tremendous amount of work and effort going on by a whole lot of employees, um, and dedicated staff members to make that happen, so, uh, just a huge shout-out to, to them. And, and that's what we, I, I think our, our staff members are all happy to do that too, because that's what we all got into this profession to do. And so the COVID year was a real challenge for everybody, um, and so far, this year is, you know, it's, we're not completely back to normal, but we're, we're taking some really big steps in that direction, so, um, that's really.
It, it, it's my impression from feedback out there that, that I agree with that, but it's sort of a new normal in the circumstance that we're in, it's not like this was normal from years ago.
Right.
And I know that as a board and as a body, and even, and the leadership around the district have talked about, you know, basically springing forward from what we've learned. And it just seems like that's happening, and, but it's not without a whole lot of effort by the staff, that's why I appreciate your comments, Dr. Carlin.
Um, the things I'd like to, uh, visit about is, one is, I think, have we got all the board faculty signup sheet, is it, is it full? If we can get that passed around again, there's probably a couple spots I can sign up for that. And then, um, the, now that the consent agenda they got approved, uh, as far as construction that's gonna go on here, this, did you explain, this is probably the last meeting we'll have in this board meeting?
I did not, so that's a good, a good point, so with the, the H-back project and the lighting project, we'll have them just built, kind of finalized in detail, but we will plan on our next board meeting being held in the city commission chambers, and maybe this one will be the city.
Thank you, might, sorry for that, that for me when it gets closer.
So don't, yeah, don't go to where you went to the government, right?
I watched online, so I'm good.
So, um, so, and probably all of our board meetings through January will, will be held, we, we've got that scheduled with that outlet in the city, um, because this room will likely be one of the first rooms that's gonna be converted to the middle service temporary office space while we move throughout the rest of the building, you get the lighting and the H-X systems installed, so. Uh, if everything goes according to plan, sometime in January, we should be, uh, ready to get back into this room. Also, we'll, we should have our audiovisual updates, um, kind of in tandem with that, so when we come back, the next meeting in this room, we should, we should see the benefit of the lights. Uh, we will have to make some adjustments for our interactions with public in this building, uh, a little bit while this is going on, but, um, this, uh, you know, this building doesn't close, we don't have, we don't have time for, for this building to shut down, so we're taking a three- or four-month project and having to, having to squeeze, squeeze it in and kind of work around things.
Okay, that's all I have. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
I still move.
Um, you can, you can.
I'm sorry?
Hey.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, the next board meeting, the negotiation will take place Monday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-nine, six PM, in the City Commission Chairman, the City Administration Center, three oh one North A Street, Cars and Cans, South.
And so I still move.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Laura, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you adjourn?
Aye.
Do you adjourn?
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.